I call the March 3, 2020 Regular Medium Council to order. Councilperson Blake will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirschner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Approval of minutes. Council, you have minutes of the regular meeting of February 18, 2020. Move to approve?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. Ordinance number 20-0-022. I now call the public hearing for ordinance number 20-0-022 to order. This public hearing is being held pursuant to notice published and posted according to law. Julie, please read the title.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor, 2006, as amended in the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 73.536 acres of land from R4 Single Family Residential District to RVG Village Green District at permanent parcel number 16A005000050 located at the south side of Johnny Cake Ridge Road west of Deepwood Boulevard and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak, would the administration please provide a description of the request and the proposed project?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Mitchell, could you give us a second?
Thank you and good evening. As stated, the applicant has submitted a plan for the proposed rezoning of 73.5 acres of land from the R4 Single Family Residential to the RVG Village Green District. In April 2019, the applicant submitted a preliminary plan for informal review by the Planning Commission, which consisted of 115 homes and 18 acres of open space on a 50-acre portion of the overall 73.5-acre property. An updated plan for informal review was then received in October of 2019 and presented at the November 14, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, which included 114 homes and 18 acres of open space with proposed access to Johnny Cake Ridge and Deepwood Boulevard. In response to comments from the Planning Commission and subsequent discussions with staff, the applicant submitted a formal preliminary plan and rezon application for review by the Planning Commission at the December 9, 2019 meeting. The revised drawing maintained the 114 homes and 18 acres of open space and included another access point into the development from the existing right-of-way of Steeplechase Drive. At the December 9 hearing, the residents had concerns about the road connections to adjoining neighborhoods. The Planning Commission recommended consideration of another access point along Johnny Cake Ridge. The applicant maintained that the owner of the site at the time was only willing to sell the 50 acres and the remaining 23 acres were going to remain in the R4 Residential District. But the applicant agreed to reach out again to the property owner to come up with another solution. A revised plan was then received for Planning Commission review at their January 23 meeting to address some of the concerns. The revised plan includes the addition of 23 acres of pasture land located on the property that had previously been excluded. The overall development now includes a total of 73.5 acres and 174 homes. With the additional acreage included in the proposed project, a second access point off of Johnny Cake was able to be included, thereby eliminating the connection to Steeplechase. It was made a condition of the approval that if Deepwood Condomedians was unwilling to allow the dedication of the private easement from their development for use as a public right-of-way, that the proposed connection to pasture way to the existing Deepwood Boulevard would be limited to a mutual easement for emergency service access only. With these revisions, the Planning Commission voted on the proposed rezoning and preliminary plan and recommended approval by a vote of 5-0 with the conditions noted at the end of the staff report.
At this time, does the applicant have any comments that they would like to share? Please state your name and address.
Hi, Jim O'Connor with Polty Homes, 387 Medina Road, Medina, Ohio 44256. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about the history of the approval process as we've gone through it and a little bit of context for how we designed this project as we went through the various stages. A little bit about Polty Homes to start off with. We're a publicly traded home builder. We're operating in 26 markets throughout the country. Here locally in northeast Ohio, we have about 20 active subdivisions and will close annually about 330 homes in northeast Ohio. Specifically within the city of Mentor, over the past five years, we have sold over 250 homes. We've invested about $83 million of capital in those real estate development and improvements. As was discussed, we initially came in as we looked at the site, and this is a great graphic representation of how we started on this journey with the 50-acre parcel. And there were some limitations that presented hardships, and we had to look at, we really only had one entrance fronting out onto Johnny Cake Road, and it really became a challenge. And there was a lot of concern about what could happen and a lot of unknowns of what could happen in that 23 acres. So that was, it was that fear of the unknown in that 23 acres that was driving a lot of concern and consternation. Luckily, we were able through discussions with the owner to convince them to sell the additional acreage, and now we are able to look at the entire 73.5 acres as one project, one community, and that's what the design that you'll see before you reflects. And it's obviously the subject of Planning Commission's recommendation. And I think, so as we go through things, I'll touch on many site-specific aspects or attributes of the project, but I think overall, there's an underlying theme or thread to that, and there are macro issues within the city in terms of the median age of the population is rising, and then also there's a decreasing household size. So these are two of the dynamics that are going on in the marketplace right now and how those two factors really impact the housing availability for the future. So the next thing we look at and study is really, what is the proper application of the zoning and what should the site be? And we look at, the city manager in his presentation, the state of the city, talked about, you know, traditional low-density zoning and the impact that that has on the housing choices that become available. And sometimes, you know, you look at, what is the best application? And we always look at zoning is serving great transitions between different zones, and you can see that this is an area that has multiple zones, and you have much higher density to the right, and then you also have an existing RVG zoning designation to the left. So we look at it as a great opportunity to create the perfect transition between the destination retail to the north, higher density to the east, and then also connect to the existing RVG to the west. Our initial proposal with that 23-acre gap in there left in open space that seemed ill-placed. So now you can see what the whole 73 acres getting rezoned would create the perfect blend and transition between the existing zones. As we went through the Planning Commission process, we were asked to evaluate many factors. We looked at every different possible application of zoning, including R1 and R2, and what we found were that we could get many more units under one of those zoning classifications, but those zoning classifications didn't have any requirements for open space, didn't have any requirements for transitions and buffers. So that's why we feel that RVG zoning designation is the best approach here in this. Again, speaking, so, and the new PD zoning could be up to four units an acre, so it could be even higher density. Going back to the city manager's comments about having, you know, housing options to address the current demographic trends, and I think that's what we'll speak to as we go forward and talk about our project, you look at housing on, kind of on a spectrum, and you say, there's housing that should be aimed for first-time buyers, new people coming into the market, the new workforce, people that are coming here because of new jobs that are being created, and then there's also the other end of the spectrum where you look at people that are looking to downsize or looking to go to a different style home that is a ranch plan and has all the bedrooms on the first floor. And those are the two segments of the buying public that we're going to be catering this project to. This is the previous plan that was submitted. Again, with the limitation of only one access to Johnny Cake Road, it became a condition that we had to have a second access point, and the access to the east, to Deepwoods, was problematic, and then also problematic coming down to the west through Steeplechase. And that was met with significant comments from the neighborhood, from both neighborhoods. As I mentioned, we were able to acquire the additional acreage, and then this is the plan that you see before you. So the principal driver here was the ability, I mean, Planning Commission was very, very clear on not coming back until we can solve the two access points. And so this plan that you see before you has two access points onto Johnny Cake Road, and one of the greatest benefits is it also takes the traffic out to a signalized intersection, which is one of the key benefits of the site. This, the version that you see before you is basically the sixth plan. We've gone through a series of meetings and a very, very exhaustive process in working with everybody and trying to incorporate everybody's concerns, comments, and suggestions, and suggestions for improvement. And so doing probably the best, I think what we have solved the best with this new plan is the access and entrances, and that's what this plan offers us. This is the plan before you. That's very busy, very difficult to see, much better in a large format. It's a little cleaner version on the previous slide right there without all the notes on it. But again, in speaking to the point of access and connection in the existing neighborhoods, one of the key things that came out of the January meeting was the proper handling of traffic going into Deepwoods and the desire not to have cut-through traffic cutting through Deepwoods. So we were able to come up with a plan that created a closed-loop cul-de-sac with an emergency access only to Deepwood, and that actually serves a benefit to them. If something were to ever happen, there would be all of a sudden a second access point provided to them also. So it's a two-way emergency benefit to both developments, actually. So the principal advantages of the site, as we have evolved the plan, is we're, it's very important when we're the planner of the community, we're also the builder. It's all one stop. And, you know, another thing is we've solved the uncertainty around the 23 acres. Big thing which I'll talk about a little bit here is the enhancements to the stormwater management system and the infrastructure, and that is very, very key to what we're doing. We're able to incorporate significant buffering and landscaping, dual access to Johnny Cake Road, and the main entrance is a signalized intersection, so better control of traffic, the dual emergency access to Deepwoods and to the community that I talked about. And then also that there's, developments like this will have a positive catalytic impact on the retail, preserving its future customers for years to come so that the retail can continue to thrive. I mentioned the stormwater and the infrastructure. The city has tremendous investment with the 48-inch line on Johnny Cake Road, but the problem with this site as it stands was there was no way for the water to get to it. And then water was coming in and flowing and actually going into the Steeplechase neighborhood to the west, flowing in toward Brook from both sides and both directions. So what this plan enables, what it facilitates is better overall storm flow. We're actually running a pipe all the way back from the back of the development. You'll see the new proposed 18-inch storm sewer connects to the existing infrastructure and then runs out and takes the stormwater north and connects to the city's infrastructure. So you had a tremendous investment on Johnny Cake but didn't have a way to get the water there, and now this development and this project enables that to happen and enables that infrastructure to be utilized the way it was designed. The next most important element of this plan, or what I think is one of the key principal benefits, is our use of green space in the development. You know, we want green space that's accessible, and you'll see how we handled the Central Park. I'll take you through some of the qualitative elements of it. And going back and speaking to the buyers, you know, there's this element of buyers, and we see it in society right now, the green generation, people that are more concerned about great community space, space where they can engage and interact with people, where they can have activities and come together, and that they would favor that more so than having a large lot that becomes a burden to them that they have to take care of and maintain. So smaller individual personal space and more common space that they can come together and enjoy and do things with. So that's one of the key elements that I think we've done an exceptional job on, as you see. We divided the open space through the planning process and with Planning Commission, we broke it down into basically three main zones. Obviously, the front entrance, a very nice stately front entrance, and then B, kind of the, more of a natural preserve area with walkways coming through there and park benches and overlooks, and then a concentrated park that serves as a transition between Deepwoods to the east and the housing to the west. But also, in our initial plan, we actually had houses fronting onto this, not fronting onto it, but backing up to it. We removed those houses. Now we have just five or so houses on the north side of the street that actually look out onto the park in the true meaning of what the Village Green was all about at that time. There's parking there, there's a pavilion, there's a community garden, there's walking paths, bike racks, drinking fountains, everything. So I'll walk through, and that's, these are some of the details right there, park benches. So it's really a place where people can come together and get to know each other and enjoy and interact in that space. Again, just another version of that. As I stated, you know, obviously we want a stately front entrance that preserves the character of the site right now, and that is always the case in what we do in a community. And also, this will be a signalized intersection, so it's able to control traffic a lot better. I mentioned the other, kind of the nature preserve area and the walk along Ward Brook and the ponds, and then there will be two seating overlooks in that area as well. One of the next elements is to look at the housing that we will be offering. So we will have eight different floor plans or eight different home styles that we'll be offering. I'll say, I'll use the term affordability, and then I'll define it. We'll say it's affordably priced and, you know, with an average price in the 330 range, and in today's standards, that's affordable. That's an affordable home. The square footage will range from 1,800 square feet to 2,600 square feet with options to expand or different things, sunrooms, things like that that you can add onto the homes. Of the eight plans, each plan will have six different elevations. So you can see a multiple variety of styles and an elevation. So if one person picks a particular floor plan and they like a floor plan, the person next to them can almost have the same exact house and have it look completely different from the street. That's one of the elements of, it's that variety of architecture that we offer. Another very important element is obviously roof hangs, roof overhangs. Every house will have roof overhangs. That's just a stylistic element, and it allows for a little bit more architectural expression with corbels and different things like that and reverse gables. These are the things that create a lot of variety on the streetscape and what we do from a planning standpoint. And I mentioned creating a variety. You know, what you'll see represented in these diagrams right here is many plans with different, you'll see some with the garage forward, you'll see others with the garage back, you'll have a porch and impediment and column serving as a transitional element, and the development features curvilinear streets, so it's not just a straight shot of houses with everything lining up. There'd be a lot of gentle rolling and curves throughout the neighborhood. I mentioned in the change, the change from acquiring the additional 23 acres or the additional expanded acreage and what that afforded us to do. It afforded us the ability to solve the problem of no connection to Steeplechase, which you can see illustrated to my left, which would be your right, and then also with the Deepwoods. Now, in speaking and working with both associations, they were both, and they spoke at the last Planning Commission meeting, they were very much in favor of the solutions that we had presented and what we brought forward, and it was extremely well-received by both associations. One of the other things I wanted to just walk through, we always like to hold ourselves to a very high standard of accountability, and so in the last Planning Commission meeting that we were at, there were several conditions that were talked about, so we've gone on and created a few renderings which illustrate those conditions that were part of the package of information that you have before you today. The first is that we got feedback on creating a pedestrian connection approximately by Sub Lot 75 right there and creating a bridge and going over into that open space. And what this afforded was the ability to connect immediately with the construction of Phase 1, the ability to access the open space in the back of the community instantaneously, and that would be put in and constructed in conjunction with Phase 1. And this would be an example of where, while we were at the meeting, we got feedback, we got feedback from Planning Commission members as this whole plan has evolved, and then incorporated it and modified our plans accordingly. And this is an excellent example of that. One of the other conditions of the development was that in Phase 1, all of the landscaping on Johnny Cake Road would be installed. That's obviously very important to us. We want the community to look Disney when we grand open. When we grand open for sales, we want it looking as good as it will all the way through the entire life of the community, and that is our goal. Another thing we studied is, there were several neighbors, adjacent neighbors who were at the meetings and expressed some concerns, and so we met with them, and then we also kind of walked through a plan whereby we're able to accomplish three things. And we call them, these are areas where we're going to concentrate high visual buffers and create additional buffering in these three specific locations because of how the new houses touched, came up to the property line abutting the existing homes. And so what we did was actually come up with, so you'll see the three areas, we actually increased the setback and increased the buffer in those areas and added increased landscaping and then a visual fencing element to create that buffer. And then also what we're able to do in addition to an increased setback in those particular houses, we're, as I mentioned, we have eight homes that are available, eight styles of homes. We're actually able, in these specific locations, to limit which houses offered so that, in this case, in those houses right there, those will be one-story or one level. So it will seem much less visually imposing than a two-story home adjacent to the existing residents. And moving on down the line, then there's another one, another house where we're creating the same effect there, and then one more further down. And so I wanted to bring these to light and make sure these were included. This was discussed in the Planning Commission, and it was never included as a condition, but obviously we are committed to including that as a condition of the go-forward. So I guess in summary, what I'd just like to say is, I mean, we believe that the project that we have proposed offers solutions, offers solutions in variety to the city of Mentor, offers solutions to be able to look at and address some of the demographic challenges that impact the housing that is available and your housing choices available. And really what we're trying to do is offer housing choices to attract that younger workforce, the younger educated workforce that is looking for a new opportunity, new housing opportunity that currently isn't available, that maybe doesn't want to undertake a massive remodeling Most importantly, Polty as a company, what we've demonstrated is our ability to listen, our ability to get feedback, constructive feedback, and then tailor our plans and bring solutions to the table. We've worked extensively over the last 11 months with the residents and with the neighbors, and we will continue to work with the city and the neighbors throughout the process. We feel the RVG zoning is a very practical and sensible application in this process, in this project and in this acreage for the reasons I've outlined. Again, diversifying the housing opportunities that are available right now, and then also looking at the catalytic effect that this can have on the retail so that it can thrive in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. O'Connor. We will now move to the portion of the public hearing where the audience may speak in favor of the project. First, I will take the two registered folks who are speaking in favor. First, Mr. Spiros Sinsermas. Please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your timeframe to a maximum of four minutes to make your comments.
Yes, sir. My name is Spiros Sinsermas. I live in 7154 Maple Street, right down the street over here. This is my first time speaking, so thank you for listening to me. This project came to my attention pretty recently, and I think I have a very unique perspective because the reason I moved to Mentor, 33 years old, I've been living here about six years, I'm a young attorney, I'm very entrepreneurial, I'm trying to start a very, like a construction company. I want to work in this community. When I first came here, I wanted to kind of escape this rigmarole that a lot of young people have where they rent, they go to somewhere, I think, kind of stupid like Tremont where they spend a lot of money and they don't have any value. They try to have a family, they can't really raise a family in a place like this. This is where I can raise a family. I plan to get married in the next year. This is, this was a model place for me, and when I was looking for homes, it was incredibly difficult to find a place that was furnished in a way, it had been fixed up. I didn't need to do a lot of work on a house. I mean, the house that I ended up buying was a heritage home, but a lot of work had already been done to that house. There was still a lot of work I had to do, but there was a huge problem with getting contractors and getting the work done, and it was, it's a lot of, it was a lot of problems. And even for me, there were things like asbestos that I had to worry about, that I really was, you know, my generation doesn't know about asbestos and removing it and finding contractors and competent people to do it, it was a big problem. And honestly, I got to sit and watch where my house was. In front of my house, there was the old greenhouse, and Polty took that over, and they started building homes. And I not only got the Mentor experience of moving in and living here and seeing the community, but I got to see how this community would improve with these new houses that were put in place. I got to sit on my patio for two years while they put house after house out of this dilapidated, busted-up old property that was kind of an eyesore, and I saw new people coming in. I saw community flourishing. You know, I had Halloween trick-or-treaters for the first time in like five years. It was the coolest thing because every year I buy a lot of candy, my roommate sitting over here, we would eat it. They did me a huge favor. So, and by the way, I mean, I have, like I mentioned my roommate, he's my best friend. He lived in Warren. He came here, he's now looking for a house in Mentor. Same issue, he cannot find good housing. This represents an investment in the future. I am your future, Mentor's future. You know, my generation, we want to give to this community, and I think this is a great project. So thank you for your time. I hope that I will see you guys again, and you guys do great work. So thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker for is Bridie Matheny. Please state your name and address.
Bridie Matheny. I'm an attorney at Polty Homes. I was only going to speak on the if come if there were questions. Address is 107th Avenue, Chardon, Ohio 44024.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience to speak for the project? In which case, we move to those opposed to the project. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against the project? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have four minutes, please.
Thank you very much. My name's Kerry O'SheaBa. I live 8215 Forest Lane here in Mentor. We are in the property, when you look at the screen there, we're at the bottom, okay? And I appreciate what the builder has done so far. And I appreciate what the builder has done so far is providing a buffer. I still feel that they could provide a bit more buffer for us in the Forest Lane Estates. As he said repeatedly, it's a 73-acre parcel, and there's, you know, they put a lot of space in the upper right corner there, but I think they could have taken some of that land, and again, with this type of zoning, it seems like it's somewhat of a, I'm not an expert here, but it seems like a free-form type of zoning here, so they could have added a little bit more land between our development and this one here. The other thing I just want to say is, I realize that you guys got to put in retention ponds, but I hear nothing about goose control. And in Forest Lane Estates, we got a couple ponds there, and if you haven't lived with geese, we've had a couple summers where our, seriously, our backyard is unusable. You couldn't walk two or three steps without stepping in something, and it got, in the later summer, you know, when things heated up, it got, I'd never believed it could smell that bad, but it could. But if you guys could, you know, add, you know, add something in here, you know, to do something about that, because, you know, it is a problem. And you guys, you're going to build some more ponds here, and I know this neighborhood isn't going to appreciate them, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am, please come to the, you may come to the podium. And please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
I'm Sally Doyce, and I live at 7648 Poplar Lane, Forest. I didn't coach you the last meeting, but I'm wondering if someone could explain to me what is going to happen on that fence? Are you, before you start doing anything, I want to know what kind of privacy is going to be there? I want to know, we own half of the lake that's next to the fence, and I would like to know what your intentions are. I've had people come over and they'd say, you've got a cement, we're on that, next to the lake, and so, next to the pasture. So I want to know what you're going to do. I know they went around our development and rerouted the water into the pasture, but I want to know what they're going to do about the fence and what their intentions are about closing off our lake, because now it runs into the pasture, the overflow does. So I have no information as to that or anybody contacting us. Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Anyone else? Counsel is in receipt of all correspondence and emails received pertaining to this matter. This public hearing is adjourned. New legislation, ordinance number 20-0-022.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 73.536 acres of land from our four single-family residential district to RVG Village Green District at permanent parcel number 16A005000050, located at the south side of Johnny Cake Ridge Road, west of Deepwood Boulevard, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak, is there anything before counsel discusses the project that you'd wish to add at this time?
No, Mr. President, although, Mr. Sorga, do you want to try to address that issue that?
She had a concern about maybe work going on either right on the property line, the fence line that runs between the property line of this new development and their development. So, it doesn't appear there is any work going on, I mean, on her property side. There's a pond there that she's referring to, that's basically a detention facility for the existing subdivision. There's no intention of modifying that pond with this development. However, I would mention that the work that they're planning to do in the stream will help ensure that their development drains better, drains out better. Right now, there's some water elevation in the stream along with the sediment, I would say is impacting their subdivision from draining. The work that they're planning to do, either, I believe, either, I believe it's in Phase Two, dredging of the stream, at least that's the schedule right now, would help their subdivision drain better.
And perhaps if that didn't clear up the residents' concerns, maybe an opportunity to talk to her afterwards further. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan.
I did have a question, a couple, question. The housing stock, the housing stock was mentioned. As far as the materials, the building materials, is there any plans for more like a brick homes, or is it going to be similar to what sort of the standard design that you showed there? I know you had, I think one of them showed a fronting some brick, but I was wondering if there's any actually going to be some brick homes or?
Yeah, so the homes will feature a certain percentage of what we'll call natural materials, so that could either be brick or stone, so a major stone on the front element, and then you'll see a lot of variety of the siding elements.
Okay. So it'd be brick fronting would be the type of stone you would use then?
Brick or natural stone is actually very.
All right, thank you.
Mr. O'Connor, while you're at the microphone, could you clarify the modification of the plan relative to property lines that has been adjusted in just the last few days?
Okay, yeah, so one of the things that came out with the law director issued an opinion in regards to how this development should be platted, and it's a different style of plating where you're actually plating a specific unit designation, which would be what we'll call a house pad, much smaller than the actual size of the lot itself. So that's the transition. It basically creates a huge area of common space, and then you have each individual unit with their own B simple pad. And that is a plating style that has been utilized successfully in the community. So initially, that hadn't been brought to our attention until the law director's opinion, and so we made a very, very quick modification, which you see before you today.
Understood, and so you're in agreement with going forward with that model?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan.
I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 20-0-022 as to modify development plan, substituting it for Exhibit B, with elimination of sublots with referendum language stricken as submitted to clerk of counsel.
Prior to amending, law director, do we need to suspend the rule?
No. First, you amend.
Thank you.
Then you suspend. As amended.
So we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Blake.
I think I would prefer to see this go on first reading due to the amendments that we just discussed. Is there?
I'll second it, because I was going to ask for first reading anyway.
The motion to amend takes.
Well, the motion to amend is not relative to whether it stays on first reading or not.
Okay, I will vote yes to suspend.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
No.
And now I'll make the motion to put this on first reading.
I'll second.
Second, Janet.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marn?
We haven't finished our discussion.
That's true. Further discussion, we have a motion though, and a second. Would you care to discuss?
Please come in, please come up. Well, first of all, I want to thank you, because I know you put a lot of time and effort into the plan, especially dealing with the administration in all aspects and Planning Commission. The main thing that I know that you took part in is the RVG, which of course allows you to formulate your plan based on the property and the surrounding properties around it. You did an excellent job in terms of your presentation, showing the different types of zoning, the different types of comparisons and inlets and outlets of how you're going to do the landscaping and the things of that nature. The main thing that I know I'm concerned about and the surrounding communities, whether it be Hunter's Woods or Silver Beach, sir, I almost bought a house there when I first got married, backed up to the pond, Gray Ranch, so I know the area well. I actually grew up, my grandmother lived on, in Hunter's Woods on Petticourt. But anyway, so the main thing that I know I'm concerned about, and especially with, I'm a resident of Noel Creek, some people here, Mr. Kirchner being one, we worked on Noel Creek for a long time. And when Noel Creek started out, it was with Petros Homes, I'm sure you're familiar with, being from the area, especially from Medina, so you probably know Sam well and Gary. And Noel Creek started out as being an upscale community. And at that time, Sam was, Petros, excuse me, was selling about three and a half homes a month all the way through the Great Depression. And then once we started coming out of the Great Depression, he couldn't keep up with demand, so he sold to Pulte. Of course, you guys came in and took over from there. So being a national firm such as yourself, publicly traded, you're able to keep up with a lot more demand. Now, the problem that happened, and we've had a lot of conversations about it, not only on council, but through the administration and definitely through the people of Noel Creek, since there's approximately 500 homes in there, is that the Petros property is an upscale home. So everything that you see, you know, with the brick, with anything inside, you know, it's all basically there. You could always add to it, as you know, people can go crazy with their own home. Now, what transpired though, is that when Pulte came in and people were building their homes, for examples, Mr. Kirchner brought up the brick facade, is that if you and I were to go back, and I'd be more than happy to do it with you, the next day or two, it's supposed to be sunny, and we could go back and look at the Pulte homes along Norton Parkway and Garfield Road, is that 75% of them don't have any brick at all. And I know it's your model, I know that's your national model, it's how you guys make money, but what transpires is if you have a Petros home, and let's just say it's 2,800 square feet, and you have a Pulte home, you guys are basically like building a car in 1970 versus buying an Audi today where it's already basically everything that you could possibly think of in kitchens, under the kitchen sink included, is in that car. So, for example, the garage doors are open during the winter, not always no brick on the outside or during the summer, is that some of the garages, it starts with studs. Other people, it's an option to pay for insulation, it's an option to pay for drywall, it's an option to pay for that drywall to be mudded in, it's an option for drywall to be fully finished, whereas a Petros home, that's already right there. So what transpired in long and short of it is, is that you have homes that aren't able to be fully dressed up and maxed out to their capabilities. So by doing that, for example, in living in Noel Creek and talking to other people, is that the Petros homes, the upscale homes, and then they call, and then there's always a conflict with that lowering their property values, because those homes, of course, aren't as nice. Now, I understand you have a model, financial model, and I'm just using the garage doors and the brick as one instance, but, and I know you need to be affordable, but if you were to go back and look in the numbers in the Petros homes back approximately 15 years ago, when he started building them, 2006, '07, '08, before the market crash, the 60-foot lot homes were approximately $350,000, and the 80-foot lots of homes were approximately $400,000, and I can attest to that. So what I wanted to see, and you've done a nice job, like I said, with the entrances, the layouts, the community areas, the bridges and everything of that nature, is what you plan on offering in terms of these proposed guidelines. And I know, based on our RVG zoning, now called Unified Development as of today, is that we don't ask for those guidelines. What I'm asking you for, as a resident in a nearby area and growing up in that area, is that we make these homes as nice as possible for the people, young families moving in, I was your age when I moved into Noel Creek, you know, to start families and have families, because the better product that you have there, the more that it helps the people of Silver Beach, more helps people of Hunter's Woods, more helps people with Deepwood, because there's a right way to do the project, and there's also a better way of doing the project. So that's what I'm asking you, is to come back with design guidelines, and if you'd like my further input, and if you'd like to meet with me, like sometime this week, I said it's going to be sunny tomorrow and Wednesday, if you have time in your schedule, I'll be sure I make the time to make sure that we have these design guidelines, because once again, we're trying to do what's best for everybody here in the city of Mentor.
I agree, very constructive feedback. I would welcome the opportunity to take that tour with you and go through, and then take you through some of our houses as well. I could bring my Director of Architecture, who handles the specific house design, who could talk about all the nuances of the design, and then also have our president as well. We would love that opportunity. One thing I do want to point out, so there's a distinct difference in terms of, you know, obviously, many people look and say, you're a production builder, as if that's a bad thing. We're a large publicly traded company, and, you know, we want to operate at a certain pace to move through a community to ensure its success, and so that we can build out very quickly. Within northeast Ohio, we have, as a production builder, we have the highest average sale price. Our average sale price of a home across northeast Ohio is over $425,000. Out of all the production builders, ours is the highest. The markets that we operate in are the most desirable markets. Mentor, Hudson, Aurora, Westlake, Avon, all of the cities that are, you know, marquee destination cities, and that's where we like to go. We're not coming, trying to look at coming in, oh, how can we undercut what the value is in the marketplace? We actually want to cater to that value and continue to build upon that. So I would love the opportunity to take that tour with you.
No, and I appreciate it, and speaking behalf of watching the Planning Commission meetings, reading the minutes, and working with the administration, you guys have gone above and beyond. And I'm sure, Brian, you want to make sure that you do something for your family's legacy that, you know, you're proud of too, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marn, that's an excellent chance to view that from 15 years ago. Other discussion, we do have a motion on the table, but, on the floor, but if there is other discussion, counsel wishes to ring up at this time? If none, we have a motion and a second to remain on first reading. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-022 has received its first reading. For the audience, I just remark, would make the remark that it can go to second reading and possibly even a third reading before council decides to act on the legislation. Thank you. Ordinance number 20-0-023.
An ordinance to authorize revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Members of council, this ordinance does two appropriation revisions to two separate non-general fund, funds that are created, the first being the General Obligation Bond Retirement Fund in the amount not to exceed $225,000 to cover all closing costs and fees related to the recent refunding issuance. And secondly, an increase of $57,935 to cover community development block grant revisions to the appropriations that were in place for ADA sidewalk improvements and also handicap accessible doors at our ICE arena. I'm happy to report, last week, we successfully sold on the refunding series our 2011 and 2015 bonds for a historically low 1.501% interest rate that will save the city in excess of $700,000 over the existing term of those bonds. And we plan on closing on this next week, so I would recommend approval of both items. So I would recommend approval of both items. Thank you.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-023 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-024.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor 2006 as amended, Part 1, Titles 5 and 7, to add new Section 151.061 to create the position of Assistant Clerk of Counsel, amending Sections 151.13 to establish a pay rate for the Assistant Clerk of Counsel, repealing Section 139.07 to eliminate the position of Legal Administrative Clerk, and amending Sections 139.02, 151.13, 155.05, and 157.02 to eliminate references to the position of Legal Administrative Clerk and declaring an emergency.
Council, any discussion? What is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-023 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-024.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor 2006 as amended, Part 1, Titles 5 and 7, to add new Section 151.061 to create the position of Assistant Clerk of Counsel, amending Sections 151.13 to establish a pay rate for the Assistant Clerk of Counsel, repealing Section 139.07 to eliminate the position of Legal Administrative Clerk, and amending Sections 139.02, 151.13, 155.05, and 157.02 to eliminate references to the position of Legal Administrative Clerk and declaring an emergency.
Council, any discussion? What is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-025 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-026.
A blessing. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Duramark Inc. for pavement lane marking services.
Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Schweiger in just a moment, but I did want to make a couple of comments on this. This is something that's pretty routine, piece of legislation from us year to year, but you have probably noticed, and I think we talked about this last year, that this contract jumped up significantly. And if I recall correctly, Schweiger was to the tune of about $50,000 more last year, and it's about the same this year, but it's a big number, bigger than what we've seen in the past, so it's got us taking notice. I've asked Mr. Schweiger to consider whether or not this might be the type of work that we can bring in-house and maybe save a few dollars. So, not saying that's going to happen, but he's reviewing that. I bring it up because I was reminded at our work session earlier, the question came up, I think, about the pavement markings with respect to share rows, which is a piece of legislation that you'll entertain here shortly. And if we ultimately do bring some of that work in-house, we would be able to do that as well. So, Mr. Schweiger.
Thank you. Bids were recently opened for this service. This annual program provides for the restriping of all major and minor routes within the city that currently have striping. Two bids received for this project. The low bid was submitted from Duramark with a base bid of $286,482.80. The striping work will be performed during the summer months and only at nights, so as to minimize inconvenience to the motoring public. I would ask that Duramark be awarded this contract. Thank you.
Matt, can you tell us, in the last three years, was it $150,000 three years ago? Was it?
As the manager indicated, it'd typically been in the $200,000 range for a number of years, and then it jumped up to around the 250 mark last year, and then only a couple percent increased into this year.
I saw we had only two bidders. Has that been a problem shrinking number of bidders?
You know, typically, we used to get four or five, but of that, some were real mom and pops that really couldn't have done the city matter anyway. And as you see, we did receive a third, but it came in late. So, I mean, effectively, we probably had three. I think Duramark has always, they've been our strippers for a number of years, and also for a number of years, they saw that they were well low than the second low bidder, so I think they realized, hey, we're leaving money on the table, and that kind of precipitated that big jump. But nevertheless, as the manager said, it's, we're getting into a big enough dollar item, it's worth a good look at possibly some alternatives.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
So, Mr. Flipiak, you're suggesting maybe Mr. Schweiger's looking at buying the equipment, and that's what we're looking to? Right. Buying the equipment and seeing how much of the manpower requirements could be handled with existing crew, and what type of supplemental crew would be needed. Again, you know, when you're coming up on $300,000, it leaves a lot of room year after year.
Thank you. Good point. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Resolution number 20-0-026 has been approved. Resolution number 20- R-105.
A resolution accepting the city of Mentor's participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation's Guard Rail Upgrade Program, authorizing the city manager to execute any required consents and to take all actions necessary to comply with the terms of the program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swiger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. Federal Highway Administration has been examining the performance of guard rail and terminals on the nation's highway system for several years. As a result, they've developed a policy on the replacement of certain guard rail and terminals on the national highway system and beyond. Subsequently, the Ohio Department of Transportation has initiated a project to upgrade guard rail and terminals at locations on the national highway system that are within the city's jurisdiction, as shown in the map and the attached legislation. Project is necessary in order to comply with the policy issued by the FHWA. In Mentor, four locations currently exist which are located on the national highway system. They are located on Center Street, on the north and south ends of the bridge, over the Norfolk and southern CSX railroad tracks, and just north of the I-9615 interchange. ODOT has requested that the city pass the attached legislation in order to cooperatively upgrade the guard rail and treatments at the above location. ODOT will perform the work, and there's no expected cost to the city. Once installed, the city will be required to maintain the improvements. And there is a photograph of an example end terminal that the contractor will be allowed to choose from for this project. The, you'll see these are pretty common on State Route 2, and the project is expected to go forward this summer.
Thank you. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Resolution number 20- R-106 has been adopted. Resolution number 20- R-107.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to designate certain city streets as bicycling shared use routes and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Council, you will see attached to your ordinances the designation of 11 sections of roadway that will be, that we're asking Council to designate effectively as what is termed as share rows, and we've been able to, we've been working very closely with members of council to identify certain portions of roadway in our community that effectively connect together our bicycle routes that currently exist, both our multipurpose pathways as well as our bike roads along the roadway, our bikeways. And so, what we're asking, what this essentially does is provides a little safer way of passage for those who choose to bike on these particular road areas by marking them as share rows, both on the pavement and with signage, effectively to alert drivers that the bicyclist has as equal rights to the roadway as their vehicles do, and to, of course, encourage safe biking through the community in general. So, Mr. Swiger, did you want to offer any comments?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Flipiak. While a bicycle is considered a vehicle and is entitled to utilize the city's roadway infrastructure, the Ohio Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices permits the use of shared use markings, or share rows, and accompanying signage to enhance safety for bicyclists by notifying all users of the roadway of the bicyclist's right to the entire lane on the roadway that is insufficient in width to accommodate a vehicle and a bicycle in a single lane. The administration has identified street segments as desirable routes for inclusion on a designated bicycle shared use route map. Upon passage of this resolution, plans and specifications will be developed to physically mark the routes throughout the city, and grant sources for installation, initial installation of share rows and signage is currently being explored. The following streets included on the map are Bellflower Road between Reynolds Road and Center Street, Center Street between Hendricks Road and Plains Road, Chillicothe Road between Fairlon Avenue and Johnny Cake Ridge Road, Corridor Road between Woodridge Lane and Jordan Drive, Hoos Road, Hopkins Road between Market Street and Hendricks Road, Hopkins Road between Mentor Avenue and Johnny Cake Ridge Road, Jackson Street between Mentor Avenue and the Mentor East Corp limits, Jordan Drive, Little Mountain Road between Mentor Avenue and Johnny Cake Ridge Road, and Market Street between Center Street and Monseau Road. Thank you.
And, Council, I'd also point out that these roadway sections that are before you were reviewed by the city's Traffic Working Group. Just a reminder to the public, the Traffic Working Group is a group that includes representatives from the Police Department, the Fire Department, Public Works, the Engineering Department, and other relevant departments within the city, the Planning Department, to collectively come together and review them for public safety enhancement, and they've given their blessing as well.
Thank you. Council, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Resolution number 20-R-107 has been adopted. Cycling Right Along. Resolution number 20-R-108.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to perform all actions necessary to accept a grant award from the 2020 Lake County Road Improvement and Economic Development Grant Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the Lake County Commissioners have very graciously provided a grant, $1.5 million grant fund to be made available to all communities within Lake County for road projects that aid in economic development throughout the county. They have determined, the allocation is based on the number of registered motorists within each jurisdiction. In our case, the grant would be for $324,450.52. Counsel is required to designate a project that can be completed within the 2020 calendar year, and we have designated Tyler Boulevard as such a project. Counsel is aware that we are receiving some NOACA funding, federal funding, in the amount of around $700,000, Mr. Swigger.
About $780,000.
About $780,000. And so this would be, this would complement the local match for that, and we anticipate that will be part of our summer construction work. That segment goes from Center Street to Heasley Road. Ask for your approval.
We're grateful to the Lake County Commissioners. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Resolution number 20-R-108 has been adopted. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, we have none. Managers' report, Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of counsel. We do have a pavement open cut request from Dominion Energy for the installation of a gas service at 7679 Hopkins Road. We ask for your approval.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Blake.
Ken, just a question about that. Is this a five-foot cut or is this a one-foot cut? Because on the diagram, it has a one-foot cut, and in the text, it has a five-foot cut. The problem I have is we just, we just repaved that roadway, I think in 2018.
I can clarify that. They originally came in with about a five-by-five open cut. We worked with them. They reduced that to a one-by-one-foot open cut. In fact, they're about six to eight inches of a core. It's a payback core, actually, that they're going to do, and that will be removed and replaced.
Is this to provide gas service to the house at?
Correct. What's going to happen is they're going to bore under the roadway to connect to the four-inch gas main on the west side of the street. However, they need to expose a 20-inch high-pressure gas main, a transmission line, in order to avoid hitting it. So it is important that they expose that line.
So this house never had gas service. I believe this is a house that slowly, slowly built over the number of years.
That's, this is the question.
And so the problem I have is it took so long to build it, and now they're waiting to connect the gas main after we repaved the road. Now we've got to dig a hole. There's nothing we can do about that, but.
They weren't originally planning to do this, but it's in the best interest of the connection that the main, the gas main, be exposed.
All right. Choice.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Flipiak, did you have any more?
Yes, I do, thank you, counsel. Lake Tran will be hosting a public meeting for their proposed Route Eight enhancements to be held Wednesday, March 4th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Mentor Municipal Building, second floor conference room. They will discuss three potential route designs for the new Number Eight that will serve Tyler Boulevard, the Mentor High School, Mentor on the Lake, and of course, Mentor Headlands. A minor route change for Route Three will also be discussed, and residents can contact Julia Schick at Lake Tran for further information, and we certainly encourage our residents to attend. City's annual waste collection program begins on, yard waste collection program begins on April 6th. As in the past, residents can dispose of 12 units of yard waste from April 6th through the last full week of October, after which residents may dispose of 25 units until the end of the second full week of December. First Energy has nearly completed the first, I'll call it the first phase of the LED light conversion, and counsel is aware, especially the ward councilmen, that we took four, what we called test areas, one area in each of the four wards, and these have, seem to have turned out particularly well. We've had a couple of comments back, just that they're a little on the bright side, but we don't look at that as necessarily a bad thing. There's about 60 lights in all. As it happens, Mr. Malachek and I had a meeting today with First Energy to talk about some economic development matters, but also they gave us, we got into the discussion about the next phases of the LED, and we made our intention clear that we would like to see the conversion citywide happen as quickly as possible. Some of, you may recall that I mentioned at the State of the City Address a week or so ago, that it's about $300 a light to convert. That actually has gone down. They just revised their pricing structure. It's gone down to $242, I believe, is what Wendy Zeeley had mentioned today. So we've asked them that if there was a way to phase this in potentially over the next three years, we would be willing to move forward with that. So that's exciting. We expect that we'll be the first large community in northeast Ohio to see that convert happen. And as I had mentioned before, the payback on these lights is now going to be just under three years. And after that, we'll see, should be, see a savings of up to 50% on the cost of those lease rate, the lease rate for the lights. We have 5,200 lights in the city, so that'll save our residents a few dollars down the road. On Saturday, March 14th, the Mentor Police Athletic Association will be hosting its first Bowl with Patrol event at the Roll House. Special needs students from Mentor High School have been invited to attend this event, which will run from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Students will have parents in attendance, as well as some of their teachers and aides. For questions, please contact Captain Mike Majernik at the Mentor Police Department. Last evening, myself, Chief Searls, and our representatives to the Lake Health District on behalf of the city, attended the district advisory council meeting. We spent the first hour talking about updates on the COVID-19 efforts and prevention efforts, and I think that we left that meeting with great confidence. Of course, the efforts of our own fire department and our safety services here have been in close contact with the Health District. City has been monitoring COVID-19 and has maintained daily communications and coordination with the Lake Health District. At this time, there are no known cases in Lake County or persons under any investigation whatsoever for it, and I think we left with a pretty good level of confidence that Lake County is going to be well-prepared if we do see a significant outbreak here. And also, from that meeting, I would, I would mention that the budget for the 2021 fiscal year will remain essentially static. So no increase to us. We contribute just under $1.6 million to the Health District for their operation. And then finally, Mr. Zampetro and I tomorrow will be attending the governor's signing of the legislation that will designate the Memorial Highway on Route Two for Patrolman Muzany. So we're looking forward to that. That's all.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Honors.
Ken, you brought up First Energy. I've been getting some calls on power outages.
Mm-hmm.
The Midland area, I guess it's been going on for a couple of years. We talked about it last year, and you were going to contact them and see if, were we ever, we were talking about a year ago about grid upgrades and all that. Have you heard anything about any?
We got some, we actually got a little feedback today.
Okay.
There are some areas where First Energy, every area has its unique issues. We had some outages just last week, and some of those are related to underground infrastructure that we got an update of being repaired or being at least investigated for potential preventative improvements. The area that you're talking about has been targeted for aggressive tree maintenance. There's some issues that were related to that, as well as a couple of other areas that they're looking a little bit more closely at. So I think I can get you a little bit more detailed update on that area.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Krieger.
Same topic, because I've been getting calls ever since last week in the Sausalito area of Mentor, and didn't realize, apparently it's been going on for years, they constantly are having tripping of their electrical down in that area.
We got an update on that section today that you're referring to. That's one of the areas that they believe that they may have some underground structural issues that need to be addressed, but they also. Mr. Malachek, help me out. What, was the line sagging? What was the term that was used? The area that you're talking about had, well, it's essentially what it is. They have, there was a lack of proper tension in the line, and they were, it was sort of bouncing back and forth, caused about 30 brief interruptions, and that was repaired.
They had one about a week ago, before the wind became a problem, where it lasted for almost a day, and that was a problem. They said this has happened before, and when it's a short outage, it causes a number of problems. But the longer ones, they said, obviously, this is when their food starts to thaw in the freezer. There are some pumps that start to get water in the basement because the pumps can't work, and that bothers them the most. But there are a few people I'm getting complaints from because they're working from home, and every time they have a power outage, you know, everything has to be redone again, you know, for their internet and so on, so it is causing problems. I did talk, contacted Wendy Zeele before she went on vacation. I sent her something today, and I did work with one of her associates during that last week, but I'm still getting calls that it's happening, so.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, and it brings up a good point, which is, as I mentioned, each one of these power outages, other than obviously if we have a big windstorm that comes through, there's a general understanding among our residents, but for some of these chronic issues, they tend to be unique to the particular area, and we do the best we can as a community, as a city, to try to hold First Energy's feet to the fire. But the best thing our residents can do is let us know when they're happening, because we don't always get good feed. When you hear about it, or often when we hear about it, it's, this has been happening for the last year.
Right.
And so we'd like to, we try our best to keep a log of that when we get those resident complaints, so that we can go back to First Energy and say, well, it happened on this date and this date. I would say that they're getting better at following up on these and monitoring. Was it one you were working on, Mr. Swigger? The Glenwood area was one that we've been having some issues on, and they just went in and did about $12,000 worth of maintenance, tree maintenance, essentially just outside of their easement area, which goes a little bit beyond what they're responsible for, but it was the cause of these multiple outages, so.
We're starting to get a few complaints out of Marshview also, which pretty much all, most of that is underground, I'm pretty sure.
That I have not heard. Thank you.
Mr. Kirchner.
Along those same lines, no pun intended, you know, you and I were out Saturday, and as long as you're going to be talking to them, I know we, we went back and forth on text messaging with Wendy and her associate Saturday. A pole fire due to an oversalted, oversalted area caused the fire on Clover, which is approximately about, what, two and a half miles from our house? And it took out supposedly a whole circuit and thousands of homes, or a thousand homes or somewhere in that, because they were out all the way to, from Tyler and all the way down 306, Bellflower, all the way to 615. I just cur, I sort of asked a guy the question, he didn't get back, was how could one circuit or one pole fire cause that much of a problem?
Well, I was a little bothered that they blamed it on our salting.
Yeah, that too.
So she demurred on that when I, when I asked about it today. I, you know, the disadvantage, you know, the disadvantage we have is that we have to take their input for what it is. It's very difficult for us to challenge something that just doesn't make a lot of sense, as that perhaps didn't. All I can say is they seem to be getting better at, let me put it this way, our diligence matters. They do recognize that Mentor is their primary, not to the detriment of any other community, but they have more customers in Mentor, they have far greater ability in Mentor to serve and far more large customers. So they are pretty good about recognizing that this has to be their, at least among their highest priorities when these outages occur. I've seen better response in the last year or so, but it has everything to do with us staying on top of it, which is why I say our residents, and our business community too. Mr. Malachek and I found out about a problem with one of our manufacturers here recently, and again, one of those situations where it's been happening for a long time, we just learned about it, and now we can ask them to, and we can stay on top of them once we put the complaint in, but how well they do with it is still something that's beyond our control.
Mr. President?
Mr. Don.
Mr. Malachek, isn't it part of your job description to know what a sagging electrical cable is on a tunnel?
You might have read it in there.
No, Mr. Ken. Ken, back to what Mr. Krieger said, I was getting complaints during non-windy times too, so I'll get a, I'll just comprise a list of streets, and we, and we talked about it last year, and then we'll work on, maybe we can.
And those streets that you and I talked about were submitted and apparently under review.
Okay. And when she gets back to me, we'll give her a call and see if we could. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Dowling?
Just to confirm, Ken, and you will probably remember the industrial park my business is in, going back about 12 years ago, it was a huge problem with the lighting and the undependability. And keeping the log was imperative to getting a response, because their records did not always agree with ours. So we actually had all the different businesses they would call if they went out, because part of them may go out, and we didn't, or whatever, and kept the log, and it was very beneficial.
Absolutely.
And we did get the problem resolved finally, so it's very important to keep that log.
And we were able to take that problem right to the very, to the president at that time.
Yes, exactly.
And got resolved, but it was through that ongoing staying on top of them.
Yes, it was.
And Mr. Kirchner has a text group right in the chronic problem area. He lives in Ward Three with the city manager, myself, the CEI government rep, and I think you've added Dave Dillon. Is that purposeful?
Well, yeah, and Wendy was on vacation, so that's why he jumped in.
Got it.
That's who I talked to also.
Clerk's correspondence, Julie.
Counsel's in receipt of Mentor Municipal Court, January 2020, month-end report, and liquor permits, transfer of ownership and location to Palace Lounge Bar LLC at 7770 Mentor Avenue from 8484 Mentor Avenue Limited, DBA Safe Crackers at 8484 Mentor Avenue, and also a transfer of a liquor permit from Blackmore Golf Club in Richmond, Ohio to Mission Barbecue Ohio LLC at 7787 Reynolds Road.
Thank you. Commission committee reports, meeting minutes, Municipal Planning Commission, January 23rd, 2020. Tree Commission, February 12th, 2020. Old Business.
Mr. President?
Mr. Martin?
Happy birthday to Ray tomorrow.
Well, thank you.
Twenty-nine.
That is old business.
That's old business. Celebrating the 29th anniversary of my 40th birthday.
Any other old business?
It's two weeks after mine, and you're 18 years older than me.
Oh, nice. That was real nice.
And I'm going to celebrate tomorrow by having an MRI, so.
It could be worse things.
Yeah, you're true, that's true.
New Business.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Dowling?
Just a question for the administration. With the high water levels we're having, do we have any idea what it's going to do to our dredging in the channel this year? How that affects it, or?
Well, in the last couple of years, it's affected it positively in that we haven't had to do much, but Mr. Kaminsky, can you, you mind stepping to the mic?
Mr. Flipiak is correct. Obviously, the higher water, it does help us. Last year, we had a lower year for the dredging. It doesn't help that it's not iced over because the storms are pushing that material towards us, but I think the higher water will definitely offset the material that's coming into the channel, and we're still scheduled, of course, to do the dredging.
And Mrs. Dowling, I commend you for pointing out the only positive to the high water.
Other new business. Persons before counsel. We have none? Executive session?
Mr. President, I'd like to call an executive session.
For the purpose of?
For the purpose of?
What purpose, Mr. Donovan?
I don't have it. It's to discuss the city's potential sale of property by competitive bid pursuant to statute where public disclosure may place the city at a competitive disadvantage.
I have a motion for Mr. Donovan for executive session.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. President, I would move that we go back into regular session.
Second.
Julie, take the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.